City Council for September 7, 2021 to order. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Mrs. Capellini?
Here.
Mr. Fry?
Here.
Mr. Hanem?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Stow?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
All seven members of City Council are present, therefore a quorum does exist. I'd like to welcome all of our guests to this meeting, particularly recent council member, Sandy Hussman, welcome back. We're happy to see you here. With that, I would invite Mr. Richardson to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Additions to the agenda, I would like to add 7A, which is Ordinance 63-2021, as recommended during the public hearing held at 7 o'clock this evening. Mr. Hanem, I would also like to add a report of your zoning and annexation committee hearing. I can do it down at 14A, and I don't think any of those participants are still here. Is that accurate from your view as well?
14A is fine.
Okay, we'll put it in as 14A, a report of the zoning committee. Zoning and annexation committee. Mr. Fry, do you have any additions?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Members of City Council. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, add a discussion about...
Any additional items from members of City Council? Hearing non, Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schroyer?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Chief Snore? Mr. Aller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Or Mrs. Brining?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
With that, is there a motion to approve our agenda as amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and our agenda for this evening's meeting is approved. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, we have approval of our regular meeting minutes from August 16th. Mr. Fry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move approval of the meeting minutes from the council meeting of August 16th, 2021, as submitted.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes of August 16th, 2021, as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and those meeting minutes are approved. We are fortunate to have with us tonight two executive directors of important organizations within our community. In no particular order, except the one that's on the agenda, I invite Andy Erbskorn, the Executive Director of Heritage Sylvania, to give us an update on a new project. Welcome, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, President Fry, and esteemed members of council and administration for allowing me the opportunity to share a couple of updates at Heritage Sylvania. I'm going to start with the one that excites us the most. It's always good, right, to start with the thing that excites you the most. As you know, since I've been here, and I would guess longer than I've been here, there has been ongoing discussion about how we can use Heritage Sylvania, especially our campus on North Main Street, to its best advantage. Of course, we are passionate about the school programs that we do, and we touch the lives of thousands of schoolchildren every year. And we hear from teachers and administrators and parents all the time about how invaluable that service is. But we also know there are a lot of hours in the day when we aren't doing school programs. We also know that through the downtown revitalization plan that you just went through last year, that having a historic property or historic entity, particularly one with green space in a downtown area, is truly unique, not just to Ohio, but actually across the nation. And it's one of the many wonderful things that makes downtown Sylvania so exciting. And of the many, many, many lessons that COVID has taught us in the last 18 months, the need for outdoor space has been one of them. We are all craving outdoor space to gather in, to celebrate in, to connect in, and maybe just to relax in. So with all of those things in mind, we are very, very excited to announce through the generous donation, generous financial donation, we were able to hire Tim Bachrader. He is partner with Edge. Edge is a planning, urban design, and landscape architecture firm based in Toledo, but they actually have offices many locations throughout the country. They have been essential in doing some work for Pennsville. They have worked on some of the great cityscape projects in downtown Toledo. I also just learned that they worked on the athletic complex and the area surrounding it at Ohio State. But I actually have known Tim for, we figured out, 22 years. I worked with Tim first at Souter Village, and Tim was the one who created the vision that took Souter Village to its next level, when he created the vision for what they call the walk-through time. We were very excited to bring Tim on board, and he is equally excited to be a part of this project. Tim is going to help us look at our spaces, and as he said, take the puzzle apart, put the pieces out there, and then come up with creative ways to put the pieces back together. Our goal is to create a vibrant, engaging community space that is uniquely Sylvania, but also uniquely Heritage Sylvania. And we believe Tim is that person to do it. We want to create a space that can be used for celebrations, performances, gatherings, events, list goes on and on and on. The space that will also then allow us to continue to do the education programs, which are our mission, our passion, to be able to have kind of the best of both worlds. He is going to look at the green space in the historical village, and if you haven't been out there recently, there is a lot of unused green space, and he's going to look at that space. He is also going to look at the Sister City Garden, which is a wonderful oasis, really, located behind the museum building. It just needs a little bit of love and attention. We are going to find a way that we can still honor that partnership with the Sister City that the garden was created to do, but really to create a vibrant, unique, outdoor space, an outdoor venue, really. And we think with the kind of the growth of the Redbird Art Box, the expansion of Dora, and the exciting things that are happening with our neighbors at Inside the Five, we really see that Sister City Garden is having great potential to be kind of this really unique outdoor venue space. He is also going to help us look at the Heritage Center Museum and how we can recontextualize it, given its new environment. We are working with Inside the Five, with Katie and Brandon at Inside the Five, and we are going to work with their plans and make coordinated, collaborative plan that will be a smooth transitional space that will be welcoming and inviting, will also allow for safe pedestrian access, but also serve as gateway back to the garden, the revitalized garden, and also to the historical village. And we're looking for ways to really unite these three spaces into one complex. I don't have many details beyond that, we just got started. We are going to reach out to various stakeholder groups, our neighbors, our area businesses, and get their input. And when the project is done, we will have great visuals. I'm a visual person, I'm going to love to see these paintings that he will create, the renderings that he will create for us. But also, he will create a plan, a budget, that can be done in phases, so that we can work on it over time. We will then set about to fundraise the money for this project, and we really think it can be a great community rallying spot, and it's our way of giving back to the community who has supported us for so long. And I'll tell you, we are just so excited about this. You can tell I'm a little breathless. It's just so exciting. We really believe it's going to be transformative for Heritage Sylvania, but we also feel and hope it will help continue the wonderful transformation that's going on downtown and into the second block. So we're very, very excited about that. The second project isn't really as exciting, but it has taken a lot of time in the last year, and we really wanted to kind of update you on what was going on. During the polar vortex in February, I know it's hard to believe when you look back, as hot as it's been, but you remember the polar vortex, it was a really horrible weekend in February. The furnace at the Lethrath House quit, causing all the domestic and fire suppression water pipes to freeze and burst. Now, while insurance was able to cover the damages that were incurred by that, in doing the work, we uncovered a lot of other issues. And you're dealing with a house that's 170 years old, you're going to have issues. We worked with Joe Shaw and Tim Burns here in the city, and they helped us identify several major areas that we needed to address. This is not renovation, this is not restoration, this is stabilization of the house to allow us to continue to preserve the house, preserve the structure, and have a safe environment for our guests and our staff. We have, to date, done about half of the work, and we were able to raise grants, successfully applied for several grants that paid for that work. We also have about half of it left to do that we're going to look to address in 2022. Once the work is completed, though, we really believe this is going to give us this fresh, almost blank slate to then build upon. In early 2020, we created an advisory committee of regional representatives, historians, architects, and educators to help us create a vision for opening more of the Lethrath House to the public. We've gotten sidetracked a little bit with all this other construction work going on, but we really feel that once this is done, we're going to come in and we're going to be able to envision the space even better. Our goal is to open more of the house to the public. We really want to create a space where we can talk about this rather challenging chapter in our history, where we can connect, where we can have conversation, and where we can invite the community in. It will be a multipurpose space, and you'll be hearing more about that as the process continues. As always, I want to thank all of you for your support, for your guidance, for your input. It's wonderful to be able to contact you and ask questions and help guide us through this process for your membership, and also just for believing in us and what we do. Thank you so much. I'd be happy to answer questions. As I said, I don't have a lot of details about the Edge project because we just got started, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
I do have one quick question. Do you have a timeline on this? I know you're going to fundraise the money, so that is, you know, not as black and white in terms of how long that will take, but any projection on how long you think it'll take to get to some level of completion?
Well, our goal is to have the plan and the vision in place by early November. We'll probably then start fundraising. I'll know more after we have that plan. The one great thing about having a phased project is that we can fundraise and do some work, and then fundraise and do some work. So it's not like this is going to sit on the shelf for five years.
I do want to take a quick moment to thank you, Andy, and forward to thank the board as well on our behalf. Certainly, this is something that we've spoken with you about several times and invited you to create that vision and then to share it with us, so I'm grateful for your willingness to listen to those words and to advance this, and I'm excited to see what comes back.
We are too. And I've mentioned to a couple of you, you know, I have been turning this over in my head for several years, and then suddenly realized I am not the person to be able to create this vision, and just less than I knew Tim Bachrader and was able to bring him on board, because he is that person.
Thank you, Andy. You have chosen well in Tim Bachrader. My architectural firm has worked with him as well, and we've had very good vision and very good results through him. And I look forward to his and your visions for the future of the Heritage Museum ground.
Thank you.
You have far more visibility now than that building the museum has had for a very long time.
Over 100 years, yeah.
You're going to lose a little bit with the Inside the Five addition, but there's still going to be greatly more vision into that, and you need to take advantage of that.
Well, and we think that by creating this kind of gateway into the complex, it's going to create more vision, visibility for the garden and the village as well.
And we will reestablish our Sister City relationship once we're allowed to cross the border in both directions.
Just a quick comment, thank you for taking the lead on this. Historical village is really just a small part of the downtown, and I'm hoping that we could puzzle together.
I think this is probably a good time to relate the economic development vision of former Mayor Jim Sinney that my administration carried through in, that dates back decades to establish nodes at the end of our downtown, south end with the hotel, the north end with the historic village, to create an atmosphere for development in the downtown block. That does not happen by accident, it was planned by leaders in the past, and you're carrying that forward very well. We appreciate that.
Lethrath House is just as...
It is. It is. I'm too in-depth, too ingrained in the construction work right now, but it will be exciting once it's done. I've learned a lot.
Thank you. All right. Agenda Item 6 is to hear from our second executive director present tonight, Executive Director of the Sylvania Prevention Alliance, formerly known as SCAT.
Yes, it is.
Maria Gagnon, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you for having me. Thank you for all of you to let me give you a little update on what we're up to. So you do know us, hopefully, as Sylvania Community Action Team or SCAT. Over the last year, we have worked on changing our name, along with the board and the staff members. That has been a process. I wore one of our t-shirts tonight just because it does have our new logo on it. It also is on the front of the folders that I gave you. But our reasoning for changing the name, if you haven't heard, lots of people like to say, oh, the poop group, the SCAT. And it got to a point where we had youth saying to us, I don't want to join that poop group. Well, our mission and vision is to help the youth in Sylvania, and if we can't do that because of our name, it was time to change our name. So Sylvania Prevention Alliance, after many meetings of brainstorming, came around Sylvania, obviously because we are located in Sylvania, prevention, that's what we do, that fits us, alliance. We are in alliance with a lot of organizations, like city council, like the township, police, fire, et cetera. And so that seemed to fit us, and there we came up with Sylvania Prevention Alliance. The logo, the tree, that is from our previous logo, so we wanted to keep that, that represents us very well. But we did change the colors, we became a little more up-to-date, so we're two blues now, which is on the front of those folders, and I think it's a really trendy logo now. But just to give you an idea, one of the things we did also, along with changing the name, was we changed our vision and mission, not because we are not still trying to reach out to our youth and help with drugs and alcohol, that's still obviously very important. But what we have learned over the last few years is that that topic is so much bigger, things that we can help our youth with, yes, drugs and alcohol, but also now, you know, gaming, social media, bullying, there's so many things that we need to address with our youth. And so we changed our vision and mission to make those encompass all of those types of things. It does talk about that in your folder as well. But our vision now is to be the leading, safe, and healthy community. It's what we want Sylvania to be, and if we can get our families and our community, our families and our youth to do that, then hopefully our community can be that. And our mission is empowering youth, families, and the community to make safe and healthy choices through education, awareness, and support. And again, that includes drugs and alcohol, but that's not our only focus, because there's so many more things now that that should encompass. So we've changed both of those. Couple other things that are new to us, we still have our youth groups in the schools, love that partnership, that's wonderful for us. The one youth group that has been in the junior highs and high schools, we've changed the name of that now also, this is in your folders, but it's called Youth Above the Noise. Tried to get a little edgier there, the colors are a little more edgy, and that was chosen by our youth that have been very involved. And again, since we were changing our name, we wanted to give them their own identity. So this talks about the things that that youth group does. The other thing that we have done this year, and part of the funding that you guys support us with goes towards this, but Core Committed is our other youth group that we have always had in the high schools, Northview and Southview. We've not had it in the junior highs, and we added that this year. We actually were in the process of doing it last year, but we all know what last year looked like, so that was really hard to start a new program in a school that kids weren't going to. But now, we've kicked it off in the three junior highs as well, because one of the things we've discovered, by high school, kids are so involved in so many things already, they already have their interests, they think they maybe sort of know where they fit in. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, they don't have all that, especially sixth grade, and if we can get them thinking positive, making healthy, safe choices through junior high, then come high school, that's just a norm for them. And so we have kicked that off, I hired a new coordinator, and we are super excited about that program. The other thing that I wanted to mention to you that we have coming up that is a little new for us, you're probably all familiar with Red Ribbon Week, we've been doing that in the schools since probably the 90s. We are still continuing with Red Ribbon Week, a little bit different, we are tailoring it strictly towards our elementary kids, that's tended to be who has partaked in that anyways. The difference is, again, it was talking more about drugs and alcohol, and although that is in there, we're doing a lot of fun activities in the schools that have other things, mental health, again, you know, gaming, social media, those kinds of things, because kids are getting phones younger and younger, et cetera. And then instead of our Walk of Light that we've always had at the high school, or had at Southview on a weeknight, we got a lot of feedback from some of the administrators of the elementary schools that said, in the evening, like that is not good, you're trying to get the kids to bed, it's dinnertime, et cetera. So we're doing the curriculum in the schools, and then on Saturday, October 2nd, we're doing a celebration end of week, it's called Red Ribbon Healthy Choices Week, and then celebration at Olander Park, we've partnered with them, and we're going to be doing hopefully some really fun activities there. So looks totally different for us, you know, we just decided since you're changing name, vision, and everything else, why not just change it all up and make it as good as possible? We felt like, yeah, just take it all on. So we do have that coming up as well, and that's kind of it for our update at the moment, but again, I appreciate your support, I appreciate your time and listening, and just wanted to kind of give you an update on where we are and what we look like, so you recognize us when you're out in the community. Anybody have any questions?
Maria, if I could just make a couple quick comments. First, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you, although I've heard fabulous things about you in the community.
Oh, thank you very much.
And now I can speak to them because you've done a beautiful job today.
Thank you.
I would share with you that I'm so excited as I listen to you, because everything needs a facelift now and again.
Yeah.
And I think it was time for a facelift for SCAT.
Thank you.
And I think you seem to have the energy, vision, and passion for the role, and I'm looking forward to great things, and thank goodness for our community that we have someone that will really help address these issues, they're very important. I love the expanded as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Yes, absolutely.
Maria, I would like to add, being the council representative, we've worked together well, there are so many committed...
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate your efforts.
Absolutely, yes, it's not about me, it's definitely about the team, the board, the staff, everybody. Brian has been awesome, Sandy still on our board and is awesome, so greatly appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions?
Not directly related to the kids, but Sandy helped start a golf tournament for SCAT.
I didn't know you actually helped start that.
You've upgraded that. You've raised the bar on that, that was a couple of Fridays ago.
Yep.
I attended it, it was packed.
Yes, it was.
The price is up, I'm sure you're making more dollars on it, and it was a very good event.
Thank you. Yes, we enjoy it, and yeah, we're super excited that every year it continues to grow. So thank you for the support. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight and updating us.
Absolutely.
There's no need for you or Andy to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are, of course, welcome to, once Sandy releases you, I guess.
She's getting out soon, this is... Good, good. I'm blessed to have Brian. Good, very good.
Let's move on with our agenda then, we are up to Agenda Item 7, which is a report of the public hearing on SUP 3-2021, held this evening at 7:00 PM in these council chambers. Mr. Fry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The meeting was called to order at 7:13, and we had the opportunity to hear from people that were in support of the SUP number 3-2021. We had nobody come to that particular piece of it, then we had one question from the audience, which was clarified by Mr. Aller, and with that, that gentleman was pleased and satisfied, he was a neighbor, and was fine with the end result of that. And with that, we had a motion to move forward with Ordinance 63-2021, which is the consideration of a potential approval of SUP 3-2021. With your permission, Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce Ordinance Number 63-2021 and read by title only. Granting a special use permit to allow the operation and expansion of a church and school at 522 West Alexis Road, Sylvania, Ohio, on the application of Galeb Abulana, on the recommendation of the Municipal Planning Commission, I move approval of Ordinance 63-2021 as an emergency measure.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance 63-2021 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance 63-2021 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. Now let's move on to Agenda Item 8. This is additional discussion about a tax incremental financing district for our downtown.
Your 7A?
That was 7A.
That was 7A.
Okay.
That was the past Ordinance 63. So we are here for more information, Mr. Sanford has prepared a report, and I think he's distributed it to all of you. Again, when we started this process, Mr. Sanford went out and found our consultant, Michelle Johnson, who had knowledge of TIFs and SIDS and grant writing. We specifically looked for those in our consultant, it wasn't just the city planning part of it, it was for this, so this is part two, and we have some both scheduling and financial updates for you. Mr. Sanford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To first talk about the handout, the first page, Leslie Brining put together some information on a timeline, some of the definitions and things in regard to what description of the improvements that could be made in the TIF area. The second part, we talked a lot about, at the last meeting, about the values of properties that are in the areas that we were talking about. I want to thank Kevin again for saving some paper and putting it up on our screen, showing the downtown, the original area was red, and then with the additional areas that I suggested at the last meeting. Laura Bigelow in the mayor's office has some background and understands this, and she was able to put this report together, shows the current values. Also, though, in the process of gathering this information and being able to answer your questions, I was talking with other communities, and Perrysburg has had experience with TIFs, and their administrator directed me to Glenn Grisdale with Rebelli, and I have worked with Glenn in the past, and just in a conversation with him on the phone, I said, Glenn, what are you doing Tuesday night? I think if you could come to the meeting and help answer some of these questions would be better than me trying to interpret and share. And I'm going to invite Glenn to come up now, and he can tell you a little bit more of things that he's done. I have worked with him, have been to workshops... I have worked with him, have been to workshops that he has put on. His company did the land use plan for Slovenia Township recently. That was the last time I think we worked. And he was just very helpful with what he was sharing. And Glenn, why don't you come up now and tell us a little more about your, your company and what you do? And then we can get into specifics because I think what, what we want to hear from Glenn is to, what can this TIF really mean to us? What is the timing of the TIF? Meaning, when do we put it in? At the last meeting, we talked, we were very concerned about how quickly we get it, get it in place. We might have a different perspective after we hear from Glenn. And then also, how long do we have the TIF? Is it a 10-year TIF? Is it longer than that? So these are the things that, that we, we talked about. So Pat, come on up. It's all yours.
The one thing that I did say when Bill called that I'd be doing tonight was doing my hair. That's the one thing I was not doing. But thanks for having me tonight. Bill did a good job introducing what, what we've done in the past. We, we've been in Bowling Green since 1998. Actually, we incorporated on 9/11, so we didn't, we didn't actually. Four years before 9/11, we incorporated on 9/11. But we've been assisting a variety of communities. Most recently, Slovenia Township, we helped with their zoning. We helped with their master plan. We just got done with Springfield. We're in Monclova right now. We do economic development work for a variety of different communities. And we, we have on staff some former Toledo folks, Tom Lemon, Rachel Bach, Tom Blaha, who's the Wood County Economic Development Director. So we've been around doing this stuff. And what we specialize in is plan implementation. So not only do we do the master plans, we want to make sure that the plan stays active, that it's not Pollyanna, that it's realistic, and that it gets implemented. Because at the end of the day, when it doesn't, we get blamed. You know, they say that, that darn plan just sits on a shelf and, you know, the plan's made of paper. It doesn't breathe. And so we want to make sure to keep our livelihoods moving forward, that plans get implemented. So in talking with, with Bill, he had advised that maybe we come up today, tonight, to talk to you about the lessons learned, that we've learned from Perrysburg with their TIF. And most recently, we're helping Northwood revitalize and rebuild the former Woodville Mall. So we have that underway right now and we have that in a TIF. And the key thing with the TIF, unlike any other economic development tool, is that it's time sensitive. So a DORA, you just created the DORA. The DORA is kind of a fire and forget, right? So you, you create the DORA and then you wait for activities to come and benefit from the DORA. The CRA, the Community Reinvestment Area that you have plenty of, that is kind of fire and forget. You get the, you get the program up and running. And when someone wants to benefit from it, there's a whole procedure around that. The goal in economic development, I always try to tell people, that economic development is actually what happens when you do everything right. Okay, so we try to make sure that folks don't get caught up in the me too kind of a thing. You'll find that a variety of communities followed you with the DORA. So I think Napoleon that we advised, they followed you with the DORA. And then I think Perrysburg, who we help, they said, "Hey, let's do a DORA." And they did the me too. And then Bowling Green did the me too. And everyone thinks that the last economic development tool is going to be the last thing they need. And often, that's not the case. So with the TIF, just like special improvement districts, you want to make sure that you get the time right. Because the easy part is understanding the area, understanding the improvements that you want to do, and understanding the cost estimates. Kevin can do a great cost estimate for that. You figure out the feeder parcels, right? And then when you do all the math, you do the public hearings and all that stuff, you certify it with the county auditor, mail the stuff down to ODSA, and they lock the base values in, right? It seems very easy. The key thing is, is that you want to make sure that you pick the right term because you're on the hook to get the money back. The good thing that you've got going for you is that you're just going to pay for it out of pocket, I guess, or out of Bill's retirement. He said, "You guys don't need to bond it." So that's the good thing. We want to make sure that you capture the valuation back. And getting 2 million back won't be hard. I mean, I think you're going to be at 11K a month over 180 months, right? To get around 2 million back. That's not much. 16.5 a month to get 3 million back. The key thing is though, is that getting money incrementally off your existing base over the 10-year period is somewhat tough. If I had, if I had a crystal ball of how county auditors would appraise things over, you know, over that 10-year period where they've got three triennial assessments, and anybody at any given time can ask for a BOR. And they constantly, some auditors give those readjustments. The key thing you want to keep in mind is that you're going to be constrained by your existing valuations. So all of the stuff that you're going to benefit from the most will be your new valuation. And that's all time sensitive, right? So if you have a project in mind where you know where the new valuation will be generally, that's easy to do. So that's kind of the nuance with the program is that if you have private sector projects that can cash flow right away, then I would say start it immediately. And, you know, once you figure out what the value of that is, and you figure out the value of your improvements, the math is easy. But some of the key things to keep in mind is exactly what the costs are going to be, right? Figure out what those are. I just heard tonight about the Heritage Slovenia Project. This might be a good, a good time to kind of capture the value of those programs that they're looking to bring to the table. You know, and you start to match their fundraising efforts with your, with your general revenues, and you get a good bang for the buck. You start to leverage your initiatives with some private sector, Chamber of Commerce stuff, downtown business owners and things like that. That's where you're going to get the most bang for the buck out of leveraging your dollars. Is to make sure that everyone understands what their roles are and understands what the taxpayer dollars are going to do, what they can't do. Because at the end of the day, new sidewalks don't bring people downtown. New streetlights don't bring people downtown. And this is just what we've seen. Products bring people downtown and products need to be housed in businesses that stay open, uniform hours and things like that. We see that a lot in a lot of the downtowns that we work. So the goal is to make sure that you get the most out of this TIF through timing, through mutual understanding of what it can do and what it can't do, and, and things like that. So I guess I'll just open it up for questions. I know I hit you with a lot.
What are you, what are you? Bill mentioned, you know, we were eager to get something in place. And what you're saying is that we ought to put this in place when we have, we know we have something coming?
Yeah, there's, there's two schools of thought. If, once you lock the TIF in place for this specific area, you're going to be locked in for 10 years, right? And the benefit is you want to grab those base values and then the new construction that comes in. So we're going to project out over the next 10 years. If you don't know of any new projects that are coming in, the only thing that we, we can work on is the existing valuation going up every three years. And that, we can kind of do the math. You guys did a good job grabbing all the parcels in those areas. We'll have to look at the base values. And then we can kind of model out where those, where that valuation, the existing stuff is going to trend in. But say you get started and with OSB board costing 48 bucks and nobody really doing projects because they don't know if we're going to be in the Delta variant, the Gamma variant, the Mu variant, or whatnot, right? You might not have a new project for five years. And now you're only benefiting from five years of that, well, really, three years. It's, it would take about 24 months for anything new to get captured, just the way projects work. So you, you're going to be on a limited timeframe. So there's a couple of schools of thought. We could look at projecting out what that existing valuation would be. And then maybe over the next month, you can figure out exactly the costs of those improvements that you want to make. And then figure out at the end of the day, if that's enough to pay you back over, you know, over a certain period of time. Pay you, you know, pay you back over a certain period of time. The other thing that we can do is look at options of getting aggressive on, you know, what types of improvements do you want to do? Do you want to do a grand project? Do you want to have the benefit of more than just 10 years? Because you can do that. In Northwood, it was such a priority to update that brownfield, the former mall, that the city took onboard and had to abate the 800,000 square feet of sprayed on, sprayed on asbestos in the building. The community went large and the school supported 100-year, 30-year TIF.
What?
100%. I'm sorry. Yeah, 100% 30-year TIF.
Okay.
And...
And the period, if it's longer than, what is it, seven years?
10. 10, 75%.
We have to negotiate with the school.
You do. Yep. And so the largest thing that the schools are worried about is the burden that comes from the schools from residential standpoint. Because some school folks believe that each home comes with 4.8 kids. And that's just not the case anymore. And so when we worked that through with the schools, they said, "Yeah, we need housing. We need this stuff. So we'll agree to 100% 30-year TIF." At any point in time when the city's done paying off their debt for the main street and all the stuff that we're doing there, that TIF goes away and they'll benefit from the full valuation of the improvements there. So we can go two routes. We can see if, after you figure out what you want to do, if you'll have enough money from that existing valuation. Or you might say, "Let's pursue the feasibility of doing a broader public project, leveraging other programs that are going on, figuring out what that costs, and then maybe talking to the schools. They might be open for something. And if they are, it's just a simple 40-day, 45-day notification period. They can waive that at any period of time through a letter saying that they support it. And then you just go through the same motion, the same kind of timelines that you have here." But doing that might not have you done by the end of the year.
Just a clarification. The thought process that we have been going up, up on this path is that create the TIF whenever, lock in your basis, the incremental gains, create the cash flow, and then you decide what you're going to do with it. You're kind of indicating that, that that reverses. We need to have what we want to do. So we want to do X, Y, or Z, and it's a $2 million. Let's say it's $2 million. It doesn't matter what the number is.
Sure.
That's decide what you want to do, and then you decide, create the TIF.
Yeah, and that sets the general timeframe of where you need to be.
Is that required by statute? Is that the, is that the order?
It's not required by statute, but that's, of all the communities that I've worked in, they say, "Hey, we want to do these public improvements to support these private projects." Or they just want to build good public realm space. And they figure out what those costs are. And then they, they backtrack the math into the timeframe that they need. Because once that's set in stone, I just take a CRA spreadsheet that figures out the taxes and where they go, plug in the, the value of the debt, you know, and times the, times the millage, and that'll give me a debt schedule. Most communities figure out what they want to do. They figure out how much they cost in the target area. And then they, they figure out the timeframe from there. I'm sure communities have done them. I've just never done it that way before.
And what's your experience? You mentioned Northwood, which sounds to me like it was a little bit of an exception based on the circumstances. What's your experience in those entities that work schools on the traditional split? Are any general rule of thumb for that?
Back before the formulas were different, some schools would say, "We want to, we want to make sure that we, we at least get, we're made at least half-whole." Because there's provisions that if you, if you go into an impasse, there's provisions under a higher vice code that says any income taxes that are gathered from the construction of the project have to be made to the schools. The city has to make those payments to the schools, so the math really gets kind of interesting. But, but the, there's really no formula. Perrysburg on the, the private sector-led Levis Commons Project, they had, their original assumption was is that they were going to do 75% for 15 years. And Larry was going to make the schools whole on a percentage basis. But when the project started, they started realizing that the project valuation wasn't going to get grabbed as fast as they thought to pay whoever was the bondholder, Fifth Earl or Huntington, back as fast as they wanted it to get paid off. And so then they went back to the city and extended the timeframe from 75% to 30 years. And because they were already having a sidebar agreement with the schools, the school signed off on it. So that's how they, they worked it there. But in Northwood, it was, it was an understanding that they needed residents and they needed this. And so they all kind of coalesced around that project.
You mentioned that, uh, once the bonds are paid off, then the TIF is dissolved?
Yes, you can do that if you wish.
But that's not a requirement?
Not necessarily. No. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, there's some communities that have, that have paid off the project, but other assets around that project still need beautified, still need paid off. And they can also use it for general economic development purposes. So there's really no need to dissolve it if you don't want to. But it would statute out at the certain timeframe that you pick by legislation.
Slovenia has community reinvestment areas already in the downtown, which are tax abatements. And depending on whether there's residential involved in it or not, the length of those tax abatements determined. Have you had to work through those in previous TIFs?
We have. Yeah, that's a good question. Because the TIF is redirecting it back to whoever owes the debt. The CRA is a direct benefit back to the property owner. So most property owners always want to go after the CRAs first because that benefits them directly. In this case, you do have a project that is in the TIF, but they're already benefiting from the CRA. There is a way that you can frame your CRA to where the property owner gets the benefit for the CRA for the first 15 years or whatever. And then if you did a 30-year TIF, that other last 15 years would be in the TIF and you would grab all their valuation. That's the benefit of doing, having a, having a, a longer time period because you do have that burden hand. But the dialogue wasn't, I guess the timing of this project wasn't aligning with the project there to see if you can mirror two programs together.
No, but we are aware of other new constructions going to be happening in our downtown. And we may need to talk to them as well then, for some guidance on how to go about that.
Sure. If you have an idea of the overall square footage and the type of project, and then their construction value, I can engineer a number. The, the fatal flaw in this program is that someone will say, "The project's going to cost 16 million." That's what our construction estimate is. And everyone gets giddy and they put that number in the tax spreadsheet. And that's completely wrong because you can be paying $190 a square foot, new build. But when, you know, Anita gets a hold of it, she's going to average them out, or any auditor. They average them out. So what I do is I look at similar, similar land use codes. In this case, I would look at your 429s. So, and I did that before I came here. So inside the 5, that building, that, that building is valued, and it's the building value, not the land value. The building value is at 529. You divide that into the square footage. That assessed valuation is 30 bucks a square foot. Some of the valuations people do on new builds and things like that, they'll take the, they'll take the construction estimate and then factor in your TIF valuation that way. And you're never going to pay yourself back. You know, in this case, it's going to be your money, you know? But if you were to owe the bondholder, you'd be taking money out of general revenues to cover the, the, the difference between what your projections are and what actualized. So, um, but if you know the square footage and the general land use of what they want to do, I'd be able to come up with a general estimate based upon similar projects and then work on that valuation for a more conservative valuation moving forward. And so if you know the timing of those projects and that information, we could kind of build that in.
Very good. Thank you for that information.
Wanted to jump back in and, and wanted you to hear that and ask the questions. And didn't want to rush into something and put something in place and be six months into '22 saying, "Why'd we do that?" So I, what I'd like to propose is that we're going to get together and, and come back with something with a little more thought out, a little more... I think the, the biggest thing I learned when I talked to Glenn was the, the, um, assumption that all these property values are going to go up in downtown 19%, and that is not what's going to happen. That's what I'd like to do, I guess, in the question. That's what I'd like to do, I guess, in the question.
I just have a quick question. Do you have a website? That's like a lot of information.
Sure, yeah, it's a, it's a revelie.me.
Revelie?
Yep, a revelie. But if you want to type in comprehensiveplans.com, it's a URL folder, it'll go to our site.
Comprehensive?
Yep.
Bill, why don't you send that around to us?
I will, I'll get it.
The other question that jumps to head right away is, shouldn't we be talking to the schools about?
I forgot to mention, I, Leslie and I did meet, had one meet. They had some very good questions, but they asked some other things from us, so we're still talking.
Okay, so they, they know we're thinking?
Yes, they definitely know we're thinking about it, and they want to know more what we're thinking, how many years, and those kind of things, and I said we...
Well, you know, thinking back on our downtown plan, that is all, that's all geared towards private development of our downtown, a thing specifically that we're going to do, which suggests to me that we probably need a longer time horizon than 10 years to reap the benefit of what we think can happen, which means that schools are going to be our partner. Okay.
All right, I'll send that in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glenn, thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
We appreciate it very much. All right, we are now up to Agenda Item 9, which has to do with the River Trail pedestrian crossing on Haroun Road to put in a pedestrian hybrid beacon. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The pedestrian hybrids beacon is the, I'll say, the new name of what is typically referred to as a hawk signal. It is the exact same signal that I talked to you probably about a year ago in putting at Haroun Road and the River Trail. And what this project will do, will enable, if there is a walker or biker on the trail that comes up to Haroun Road, they'll basically be able to push a button. The overhead lights will go through a sequence of flashing, and then ultimately to solid red. That will indicate to the oncoming traffic to stop, allow that pedestrian to cross, and then that signal will turn off again, opening up the traffic to move forward on Haroun Road. So, we are looking at advertising and awarding the project yet this year. Construction will actually be scheduled for 2022. The delivery time on traffic poles is unbelievable. It's at least six months, and some projects have had to wait longer than that. So, we'd like to get this moving, because that's going to be, the project itself actually won't take very long, but it's, it's just getting the poles. So, we'd like to get started moving on that. We hope that the project can be opened by the Memorial Day holiday, by getting this early jump, and that we can get it done. The estimated cost of the project is $110,697.79. It'll be paid from our capital improvement fund and moved forward as part of our plan, and we also will receive, this is a joint project, we joined this project with the Haroun-Monroe project as part of our OPWC application. Proportion that grant program out to this project, we'll get about $26,500 in OPWC funds returned to us as part of this project. So, net out-of-pocket will be about $84,000, $83,000. So, we do think it's a needed project. This has been talked about for some time since we opened the River Trail. At the time that we opened the trail, this was looked at, but it was not, it wasn't warranted for the traffic counts. We redid a study there, the traffic counts increased, but then we were also able to go from proposed pedestrian traffic to actual pedestrian traffic. And that combination of increased vehicular and actual pedestrian traffic does warrant the signal. So, it's time for it to go in, and we would request that the clerk be authorized to advertise.
My original vision for this was that the River Trail would go under the Haroun-Roe Road Bridge, as we do go under US 23. But the engineers determined that the bridge opening was not wide enough, or the height enough above the floodplain to be able to do that. So, we investigated these hawk lights, and I've watched them in action in the city of Worthington. There's two in their downtown area, and they are very effective. They are, some of you might think they're going to be objectionable. They put three stoplights up above the road, they start flashing red, and then they go all solid red. But having watched how well the roadlights work or don't work along McCorve Road and out on Erie Street, I think the hawk light is the right approach. The traffic coming down off the hill from the hospital, heading north on Haroun, barrels right along. I think this is the right thing to do.
Can you time this with the light at Monroe and Haroun?
There's not much timing to be done with this. The one thing that we're looking into is if pedestrian does activate this hawk signal, if that can adjust the times, timing sequence on, at Haroun and Monroe. So, we are, we're taking a look at that. But this signal, for, for everything to be, well, coordinated, that's what it's called, that you coordinate the signals. And this hawk signal operates on its own. It doesn't, it doesn't have that coordinating ability. What we're taking a look is if we can run a line up to Haroun Monroe, and at least let that signal know that it's activated, and then see if we can adjust the timing signals Now, and understand that this is only, you know, it, it will be, you know, 20 seconds, 25 seconds that pedestrian has. Nobody's going to have to run, but you shouldn't lollygag across, so...
Mr. Aller, I have a quick question. You confused me a little bit when you talked about the delivery time for the traffic poles is six months. I was thinking that was like a study of traffic or something, like, what are the traffic poles? Is that the study of the traffic, the individuals and the...
No, the poles that the, that the lights, the signal pole, traffic signal poles.
So, for the, for the delivery on those?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That confused me, okay.
Yep.
For the traffic.
Sorry about that.
Literally the poles, okay. Thank you.
That, I believe the condition of that bridge is a, is a 2. And to, before you really start looking at upgrading your bridge, similar to the Silicon Drive Bridge, needs to be a 5. And it, it takes a long, several years to get from 2 to 5. Yeah, at, yeah, at least, that would be my guess, yeah.
Aller, I'm sure you're going to take care of this when you're planning, but I would suggest is, whatever the duration is, take into account people who don't have the same level of mobility as many, many people who might use the trail or on a bicycle or something like that. There are obviously citizens out there that don't have the ability to move quite as fast, and that's a pretty wide road.
Yep. They're timed for, to allow, they have to be allowed for ADA crossing and things of that nature. So, they take a look at the, at the width of the road, and then the signal is timed according to that width.
I assume there was a science to it, but I just wanted to mention it.
Question, will there be an approach signs?
There will be, like, an assigned hawk signal ahead or overhead, kind of like what you see in Mami, if you're on 24 there, they have that signal timed ahead. Oh, yeah, yeah, that'll be done as part of the project, yep. That was something, we actually, we actually were going to do that this past summer, but because of the project, we, we didn't, because the tape is pretty expensive, so...
Council is ready to proceed. Mrs. Westfall, we need a motion to authorize the clerk to advertise for bids for this traffic signal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that we authorize the clerk of council to advertise for bids for the Sylvania River Trail pedestrian hybrid beacon project.
Second.
Moved and seconded to authorize the clerk to advertise for bids for this project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Aller, when do you expect those bids to be due?
We, we plan on being back for the second meeting in October for approval of the bids. So, between that first and second meeting in October, we'll take bids.
All right. Move on to Agenda Item 10. We have a banner application that's come in from the Sylvania Area Chamber of Commerce. Put a banner up, they've put in the past for the Fall Festival, it's on the back of their application. Every banner application is required by ordinance to come to City Council. We do have a, an ordinance for this, Ordinance 62,021. To Hanam, any questions, or are you prepared to proceed with this?
Let's roll. Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of Ordinance Number 60-21, and I'll read by title only. Approving the banner application of the Sylvania Area Chamber of Commerce, authorizing the zoning administrator indicates such approval on behalf of the City of Sylvania, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance 62,021 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries an Ordinance 62,021 is enacted as an emergency measure. All right. We're now up to Agenda Item 11. We have proposed Ordinance 61,2021. This is to enter an agreement to modify our electronic monitoring services of the Sylvania Municipal Court. Ms. Briening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Magistrate and judge of the Sylvania Municipal Court ordered this proposed agreement to us for consideration. They currently have electronic monitoring that defendants in the court are placed under. However, it wasn't formally in an agreement like this, so that's, that's the change. So, there's not a change in procedure, just a change in the formality of it. They've asked the council approve it.
Briening, so the, the cost projections here, they're already embedded in the budget?
Yes, that's in the court budget.
It's not an incremental cost?
Correct. I believe now they are charged based on how many they put... And I'm not sure exactly what that cost is, but this sets the, sets them at a specific number for the electronic monitoring, and a specific number for the alcohol monitoring. And then, they can go over that course, but then they're just charged at a higher rate for...
And...
The cost is in the budget, in the court budget already.
Right. By doing this, that avoids potentially sending the individual to jail out west of here?
Correct. If we didn't have the ability to put them on electronic monitoring through the county, we don't have that capability at the court now, I don't believe. So, if they, if we didn't enter into the agreement with them, they could evitably say that they weren't, that they wouldn't monitor the defendants for us.
I assume Judge Bonfagli originated this, or...
Toby, are you comfortable with the dollar amounts? That seems like an awfully large sum of money, $213,525 to be paid at at $13 a day. Okay. We do have Ordinance 61,2021 to enter into this new agreement. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number 61,2021, and read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with the Board of Commissioners of Lucas County, Ohio, for electronic monitoring services for the Sylvania Municipal Court, and I'd like to move adoption of Ordinance 61,2021 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance 61,2021 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries an Ordinance 61,2021 is enacted as an emergency measure. Moving on to the second page of our agenda for this evening, we're now up to Agenda Item 12. Chief Snore is here to ask for permission to purchase a new vehicle for the police department. Chief Snore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this year, we had purchased two planned vehicles, part of our fleet, the capital budget this, for 2022, or for 2021. Since that time, one of our DARE vehicles had a maintenance issue, problem with the roof, and that vehicle had to be taken out of service and was ultimately sold at auction. Also during this year, we received a donation from a local charitable organization that intended to assist in buying a vehicle. And as part of that opportunity, a Dodge Ram truck that we bought earlier in the year that would be used for a variety of purposes was repurposed to community fairs and will become a DARE truck. So, initially, that truck was going to be a multipurpose vehicle to be driven by administrator, and also used for towing some of our trailers and that sort of, that sort of, those sort of duties. So, after all those moving, items moving around and that sort of thing, we're still short one vehicle. And, and the culmination of all this has been a reduction over the last two years of three vehicles from our, from our fleet. We try to multipurpose vehicles as much as possible. We, right now, have three administrators and only two vehicles assigned to the administration, and we also use those vehicles to send out of town for training. So, right now, with the donation and the residual funds from the two vehicles we purchased early in the year, we have about $40,472. Dark Automotive has been looking for a state contract vehicle or a vehicle at state contract pricing for us for a few months. They have located a 2021 Dodge Durango. The regular price on that vehicle is about, or the MSRP is $43,417. However, through state contract pricing, we can obtain that vehicle for $32,712, which will leave us still with about $7,700 left in that, that capital expense light item. So, seeking permission to have purchase.
Chief, what, first of all, it's wonderful that you were able to actually find it.
Right.
Which is not exactly easy to do from what I can tell.
They found it, it actually wasn't built yet, when they, I located the VIN number for us, so...
And what else done if it was actually authorized, as far as outfitting the vehicle, and what is the anticipated cost of it?
It's fairly minimal. We do, all of our, our vehicles assigned to the fleet, by and large, do at least put emergency lighting and sirens on them, in case they have to be used for emergency response, or more often than not, our events. Sometimes the events in town will utilize all vehicles in the fleet. And that, that can, that is... And that, that can, that is done in-house here, so we really just have the equipment caught, the installation is done here by our city mechanics, so a couple thousand dollars worth of lights at the most. And it may come out of this capital expense. We also have budgeted funds in our vehicle maintenance that exceed those expenses as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You do have in your council packets, proposed Ordinance 62-2021 to authorize this purchase. Mr. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number 62-2021, and read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to accept the proposal of Yark Automotive for the purchase of one new Dodge, 2021 Dodge Durango for the Sylvania City Police Department, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $32,712. I move passage of Ordinance Number 62-2021 as an emergency measure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for passage of Ordinance 62-2021 as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, an Ordinance 62-2021 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. Thank you for the update, chief. Moving on to Agenda Item Thirteen, you have a report from the service director about two obsolete vehicles, both a 2005 and a 2006 Ford F-250 pickups. Mr. Aller.
Yes, these two pickups were part of the plan, so to speak, with the, with the vehicle purchases that we've made in the last year. Once those new vehicles came in, we can now dispose of the vehicles that they replaced. So we are recommending that we dispose of a 2004 Ford F-250 and a 2006 Ford F-250, 15 and 16 years old, and we have obtained all life that we can out of them. And, but we do recommend that we do on GOV deals versus just scrap value on these, so.
We need a motion to authorize these to be disposed of on GOV deals. First vehicle listed is a streets department vehicle, so Mrs. Westfall, will you make the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that we put the following items as discussed here or as presented here on GOV deals.
And moved and seconded to grant approval to dispose of these two F-250 pickup trucks on GOV deals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item Fourteen, committee reports, we do have added Item 14A, which is a report of the zoning and annexation committee meeting held earlier this evening at 6:15 in council chambers. Mr. Hanam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did hold an annexation zoning committee meeting this evening, 6:15, for the purpose of discussing SUP-1 2021, an application from the Sylvania Board of Education for a special use permit for a cell tower. All members of council were present, along with all members of council, including all the committee members, Mayor Stowe and our law director, Bill Sanford, Kevin Howard. And we had a number of visitors there. Meeting began with a review of the special use criteria for considering the cell tower special use. As committee chair, I commented on each of those criteria as we went through those. I'm going to leave the specifics of that to the tape rather than try and summarize those here. We then took comments, or comments and observations by each member of the committee and the other members of council. Legal counsel for the applicant commented on our action, and Dr. Samuelson, who has submitted some other materials by email, also addressed committee. The decision of the committee was to prepare legislation consistent with the planning commission recommendation, and that we would consider that legislation for the next council meeting, and we adjourned at 7:02. All ahead.
All right. Would you like to, we talked about authorizing legislation be prepared to follow the planning commission's recommendation. So you have something to talk about?
I can, I'll move adoption of legislation consistent with the planning commission recommendation for our next council meeting.
Stowe? Adoption or preparation?
Sorry?
I think you said adoption of.
Preparation of legislation consistent with the planning commission recommendation.
Great, thank you.
Second.
And moved and seconded, prepare legislation for SUP-1, following the recommendation of the planning commission for the consideration of council. All in favor, then indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Added Agenda Item 14B, Richardson would like to talk about some open board appointments. Mr. Richardson. What action are you looking to do? Do you want the city to post it on our?
Yes, post the.
I don't think a motion is required for that. You publicly noticed it here at a city council meeting, and we will follow through on the city website. I don't think you're prepared to schedule a committee meeting to review those, so I don't, I don't think any action is needed. You've taken it already by announcing those openings. Thank you. Are there any additional committee reports to be made at this time? Or any committee referrals? Hearing none. We have no informational items for you at the bottom of the agenda. So if council is ready, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and this council stands adjourned until its next regularly scheduled meeting in 13 days on Monday, September 20th at 7:30 PM. Thank you all for attending.